For a brief invitation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And brother pass one, I'm gonna call on you to lead us in drink.
All right, y'all would pray with them please. Our Father and our God, we are so grateful for the opportunities that we have each and every day in our lives. God, we thank you for this meeting tonight. We thank you for each one of the citizens that are represented here tonight, God. I ask that you be with the council and the mayor as they do the business of the city, God, that they always remember first and foremost that they're here to do work for you, God, and then to try to do the things that are necessary to keep our city in good, uh, in good shape and moving toward an ultimate goal, God, in your son's most precious and heart and hand and pray. Amen.
Amen. And now recorder if you could.
Alderman Hatcher, here. Alderman Freyler is absent. Alderman Skipper, here. Alderman Bennett, here. And Alderman Candlebinder.
Yes ma'am.
Attorney Danker. Treasurer Myers. And quarter rotten Baker, do you have a call?
Excellent. And just so that folks will know, Mel called me earlier. He's got folks in town, some elderly relatives that can't drive around town on their own, so he's gotta drive them around. That's the reason he's not here. But he, you have his department report in your packets. James Freyler called also prior to the meeting, said he was not gonna be able to make it. He was just feeling a bit under the weather. Okay, as you've noticed so adroitly, we do have some extra folks here tonight. I would like everyone who is here to talk about, or on the, not necessarily talk about, 'cause I understand we're gonna have one speaker, right?
I believe that's the plan.
And, but everyone who is here for the, I think it's District fifty-three and fifty-four improvement, District taxes, if you could stand and tell us who you are. And if we could start right here and we'll just go down this front row, then back to the back, and then across over that way.
All right. I'm Aaron Gliven, I live at two thousand six Stallion Pass.
Okay.
My name is Ankeisha Adams, I live in Parkway Meadows.
Alandria Jordan, Parkway Meadows.
Derek Brown, I actually live in Carrington Place, from here in support of these guys.
Okay.
Eliana Noble, and I live in Mountain Crest Circle.
Michael Lopez, in Stallion Pass.
Eric Schneider on Skyline.
Ron DeCaver on Downy Ridge.
Sheila Stewart, Parkamills also.
Okay.
Daniel Rogers, Mountain Crest Circle.
Whitney Holden, I'm also in Carrington Place.
Uh, Ben Holden, and I'm in Carrington Place, and I have no horse in this race because I'm not in these special districts, but what I've found out has been, it's moved me to action.
Brooke Melvin, Almond Crest side.
Okay.
Uh, Brian Franks and John Franks, we're on thirty twelve, Parker Crest.
Sean Massey, I'm on South V Drive.
Okay.
And Nathan Swain on Skyline.
Okay.
Red Hatcher, I live in Parkway Meadows.
Hey Red. And who's that, we got somebody else coming in too? And, all right, we just did introductions. Are you with one of the improvement district tax?
Yes.
Okay, and your name is?
London Jones.
London Jones?
London, L A N D O N.
Okay. And we've got a sign-in sheet too, where we'd like to get your contact information. So we can get that to you later. You with the improvement tax too? Improvement Tax District, why are you here?
And your name is?
Arch Bullock.
Arch, Arch Bullock.
Arch Bullock, A R C H.
We appreciate you being here. We've got a sign-in sheet, look around here somewhere.
I got it right here.
Okay.
It's such a long list, it takes awhile, give a sign.
I promised, uh...
Ben, you're gonna be the speaker, right?
That, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, I promised Ben that we would put y'all at the very beginning of the meeting tonight. We actually have a pretty short agenda, but we've got some things that I know that y'all are not gonna be interested in, we're gonna be addressing. But we've also got a unique situation with a longtime employee who's gonna be leaving us. You know, this is gonna be his last city council meeting. And so we're gonna be taking up some time with honoring him too. But Ben, I promised you that we'd put you right at the beginning of the meeting so that you could share what information you've gathered with us. And it's important for everyone to know that this is something that has not escaped my attention since I've been mayor. There's been very limited things though that I have been able to do. Recent events have presented opportunities though where they might finally be able to do something. And I have already made conversations with some folks that Ben isn't aware of yet. But Ben, go ahead, and he and I'll be meeting next week and discussing things further.
Well, first off, I want, I wanna appreciate, extend my appreciation to the city council for accommodating this extraordinary request that we had. I mean, it's, it's unheard of for a city council to put an agenda item at the top of the agenda the day before the meeting with no notice. So I appreciate your, your understanding of this matter. I understand that this has been a thorn in the side of the city and your citizens for a long time. Am I understanding from, I, I'm an engineer by trade, I don't, so my, my understanding of what the Arkansas code is limited to a layman's understanding. But from what I've read, you had no, no recourse in any actions to help your citizens in any way to assist them in actions in another local government.
Well, can I ask you to, 'cause I'm sure you discovered this too, but this has been something that, you know, is really, a lot of people think that this money comes to us in some way, or that we have some influence over.
No, and I, it, there, there is a lot of misunderstandings about these improvement districts because they're designed to be almost transparent, I mean, to be invisible. And I, I think even among the people who've been very involved in, in our actions to date, there's still a lot of misunderstandings because it's very difficult to wrap your head around it. If I understand it right, everyone's taxes are in these improvement districts. Real quick, just get the basics, and then I'll stick to my agenda so that I keep my statements brief as possible. But your taxes are assessed by the district. The district has their own assessor. He's actually runs his own private firm, and I believe his only firm's responsibilities are to assess for these improvement districts. These, this assessment is completely different than your county assessment. And from what I have found, your assessment in your districts varies greatly. And it has no bearing on your actual value of your home. I, the, the people who had, are in District fifty-four who pay the nine hundred dollar a year tax, did you know that your improvement, that your house has been improved by the district by fifty thousand dollars? According to the, the county, according to the district assessor, that's been how much value was added to your lot. So your lot is now worth sixty thousand dollars without a house on top of it. But anyway, so, so the, the districts have their own assessor, they have a commissioner, and that's essentially the only organization of this form of local government. They utilize the county assessor to collect the taxes. It only passes through the county treasurer and it is deposited directly into the district's bank account. And I, from my, looking into the county clerk's records, there's record of the county treasurer expressing his extreme frustration about these districts and how, how people didn't even understand how they work or what they're asking him to collect. And from what I've seen of the records, for your districts in particular, I understand his frustration, and he's got fifty-four of these in his district at least, and his jurisdiction at least, so, um, anyway, I, I, I came off topic. Um, I, I do wanna say that my statements are probably gonna take twenty or thirty minutes, and I apologize about the intrusion on your, your original meeting.
Twenty or thirty minutes?
It's, it's...
That's what we call brief?
It's taken me s, over sixty hours of work to pull this together, and I've worked over the last two days.
But we agreed to brief.
I've taken at least ten hours of personal time to condense my thoughts to be as clear as I can, and to be as brief as I can, but this is an extremely complex issue, and it does take some time. I would, to, to keep my statements as brief as possible, and to keep my statements as brief as possible, I request that the city council keep their questions and comments to the end unless it's a clarifying point, 'cause I don't, I don't fully understand the subject, and I don't wanna misrepresent anything.
Uh, I, I'm gonna ask that we just forego any questions here tonight.
You're looking at me, I see that.
And, uh, 'cause he and I are gonna be meeting next week.
I, I...
He doesn't have a clue as to what I've done on this yet.
No, I, I...
And this is just a very preliminary first step. And you promised me on the phone this was gonna be brief, and twenty or thirty minutes is not brief, but we will indulge you.
I, I, like I said, I appreciate it.
I'm like, that's the last thing, Dave.
I, I appreciate it.
As they roll two, two card on it.
And, and I, and I think by the time I get done, you'll understand why it's taking me so long to, to talk about this subject and understand why and what we're trying to request of the city.
Sure. But it's important to note, it's not gonna be solved tonight, it's not gonna be solved next week. What we're looking at is probably gonna be months, it may even take longer than that, who knows? But this is the first step, and that's why, this is not gonna be your only opportunity to talk to us. Uh, as you found this week, I'm very accessible, and it's just a matter of working out a time when it works as conveniently for you too. And so, we're gonna communicate, but let's just try to keep this as brief as possible tonight.
Well, absolutely. Um, I do wanna explain a couple things real quick. I have set up a video system that is not in any way to try to hold anybody on the city council to anything they've said today. Our entire movement has been set up and run on social media. And we had two members of our, our group who have been probably the most active, who unfortunately couldn't be here today. One of them had some work training that he couldn't get out of, and another one had a pre-scheduled outpatient surgery, and she had threatened to come to the meeting anyway, and I told her that I could set up this tool so she would know what happened and wouldn't have to leave her house. And I also...
It's important for everyone to note too, that the city council meeting is not where you work things out. The city council meeting is where you bring plans that you have already worked out and ask them to approve. And so, when we come in and we try to get the city council to work something out in during a meeting, it's really a waste of their time because, I mean, we don't have the time to do that kinda thing. So, we're gonna, what we're gonna have to do is we're gonna have to get our heads together, we're gonna have to come up with a plan, and then bring it to the city council meeting. And, and that, that way it's a more efficient use of their time. But this is just for informational purposes tonight, this way they've got some things to be thinking about.
Well, and to that point, sir, the, why we're here today is to ask you for your help, to notify you what specific actions that we want you to take, and which actions we respectfully request that you don't take. And I'll explain why in a minute. Most of my comments are actually not directed at any member of the city council, at the city at all, at large. It's actually directed at the commissioners of our other local government. The issue that we have, my understanding of the local code, I mean, the Arkansas code, is we have no recourse to petition our commis, our board of, uh, commissioners to hold a public meeting. That's why we're using this venue today, is to have a public, uh...
Inquiry.
Inquiry, well, not, not a pu- public inquiry.
We can't even do that.
No, 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 no. Let me be clear, to have a public statement to our commissioners. Now, when I called the mayor yesterday and he agreed to our, our, our agenda, I'm sorry, I, I got off my, my agenda here. I'll, I'll start real quick at why I got involved with this story, and I think it will help, help explain everything. So, when I first looked into everything, I, I saw a Facebook post, someone had, was complaining about their taxes doubling. I knew how to find everything on the county accessories website, and if it takes me less than two minutes to solve someone's issue on Facebook, I generally wanna help out. But when I started looking into what they, what the issue they had, and what they had already done, they had gone well beyond their due diligence. They had reached out to everybody that they could, and couldn't find answers. And I was legitimately concerned because I live in an improvement district in Carrington Place, and I thought that the improvement district taxes were set, and if their taxes could double, well, mine could too. So, everything I did originally was just to determine if my taxes could double like theirs, and what I, I, I haven't, I haven't found out exactly why your taxes doubled. I can, I can speculate, but as far as the actual reason, I don't know. And I've done tons of work to try to figure that out.
Answer I got was 'cause we agreed to it when we bought our house. That seems the exact answer I got, when we started fighting this fight three years ago when I got elected.
Well, and, and I'll say that the...
It is important for everybody to know that we have two council members on this end of the table who are in the improvement districts.
Stallion Pass, Crest Side.
And are facing the same things that all of you are facing.
Mine's not that...
And who have been working to look for solutions. Uh, but again, we're very limited. And again, I wanna get back, stop interrupting you because we need you to be, and move on, okay?
All right, so, so I, I think what it comes down to is, it's essentially an Arkansas code problem. If I had to speculate, I would say that the municipality that we're set up under was a law designed by developers for developers. They essentially have very similar powers to a city and county government. They have the power to accumulate debt, to assess your taxes, the power of eminent domain, to purchase property, to sell property.
Sorry.
All of this without any, any entity having any say in any of this. Now, I'll, I'll say that from reading the code, some of it makes sense. I mean, if you're a developer, you should, and you own all the land, you should have some say in how you're going to develop it originally. But once there's, once you're finished developing and you have homeowners who have moved in, you should have a legal recourse to petition your local government. And from what I can tell, there, there is no recourse. We can't request anything from our local government. The, the only, only actions we have are under state code as far as your rights as a citizen. So we potentially could use a Freedom of Information Act request on them, but I, I do wanna caution everybody in this room, the more you get informed, any actions that you take against this local government, their costs are passed to you on your taxes.
And he's talking about the improvement district, he's not talking about your city government.
No, 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 absolutely, absolutely.
He's talking, and maybe that's the way that you should discern the difference.
Yes, I, I'm sorry.
The district...
Yes, district.
And, 'cause they're not government, they're district.
No, they are a locally municipal government.
They're an entity, a governmental entity.
They are a government, sir.
And elected officials?
They, they have an appointed board of commissioners. Okay. And they are under the local government code of Arkansas law.
So it's a state law?
Yes. They're set up by state law and run by state law, and nobody has any jurisdiction over them, nobody has any public say in what they do, and nobody can dictate anything to them, and nobody has any recourse.
Improvement districts are set up to, uh, build the initial infrastructure for the roads, the sewer, the water, all of those things. Without an improvement district up there, none of your houses would exist. But by the same token, if the city of Shannon Hills had not invested millions of dollars too in that water tower up there, and the people, you know, who don't even live in your improvement district paid, you know, got that, you know, going, uh, they're the ones who built that water tower up there. And at present, nobody on this side of I N Ridge even gets any benefit from that. We're right now in the process of trying to connect those two water plants. But continue on, please.
Well, I, I, I'll, I'll state that I, I found very little information about what the actual money was spent on. It, it's completely possible that there is no, no issues with what it was spent on. My concern is that the, the information I should be able to obtain from a local government, they're unwilling to share with us. They, they, they're unwilling to share even their, their basic budget. They have a budget of over, combined, over six hundred thousand dollars a year, which I think is pretty, pretty substantial for a local government to not even submit a budget or to, to have any public indication of what their assets are. I, I've, I've found some assets, but I don't even know that I know what everything that the, the districts own.
The districts really don't own anything.
That's not true.
No, they, they really, the citizens that, of the district...
You're, you're absolutely right. The landowners of the districts...
There is no more landowner, the, the developer is gone. He doesn't exist anymore.
Everybody in this room is a landowner, and they own part of the district. You're, you're, I, I, I appreciate the clarification, that is absolutely correct. Everything that the district owns, you are a part-owner of.
Include the hundred and eighty-seven acres of green space.
That's right.
Yeah, um...
But the money goes to repay the bond.
Yeah.
Yes, it does. And, and my understanding is, what I do know is, out of the money that you, that you are paying now, you're, you're paying about enough, you're, you're taking in about enough in taxes to pay off your debt.
That's right.
So, and it's possible your taxes will go up over the next five years because the interest rate on those bonds is a sliding interest rate, so... So, it, it's not a high change, I think it goes from five point five up to six point five over like fifteen years. And after, at, at this point with the bonds, it'll be paid off in twenty years. I think we're ten years into a thirty-year bond.
But the only question I haven't got answered is will our taxes or our special improvement tax end when the bond is repaid? That's the only question we haven't been able to get answered.
Uh, improvement district fifty-four has no actual property, so the district can at that point dissolve if the commissioners wish it to, because there's no maintenance that's required. Fifty-three, because it does have parks essentially, um, part of the, the reason for the district is to maintain those parks, so there, there'll be some money coming into it. Carrington Place that I'm in doesn't have any debt right now, that's part of the reason I moved into Carrington Place, and, and I pay a reasonable amount of money in property taxes to maintain.
An example of a former improvement district that is now handed over to the folks that live there is South Fork. South Fork, yeah, they've got their own board over there, and they collect their own money. They're spending the money they collect on rebuilding their prop, their privacy.
Mowing their front yards.
But, but I would encourage you, you know, a lot of this stuff is inside baseball type stuff that most of these people really, you know, are not that interested in, but we need to discuss and know, you know, as far as we're trying to determine a plan for going forward. And so, let's move on along.
I, I, I'm, I'm almost to the, the actual plan. Let me, let me make sure I'm not missing any inch, any parts. Okay, so, what we have found out, and this is why I, as soon as we found this out, and I, I checked with the lawyers that have been involved in our group to make sure that this is not my interpretation as layman, but that it is an actual legal interpretation. I've checked with several lawyers to make sure that this is accurate. We, under the code that we have, we have one action and one action only as landowners, where we can directly dictate what happens on the board of commissions. We have an option, if we can get two-thirds of the land valued as it's assessed by the district, signatures from, from the owners, then we can petition them to be removed from the board of commissioners. My understanding is that that is not a case that we have to make. As soon as we have that, and it's been proven that we have two-thirds, that's all that's required, and that the government entity in charge of that improvement district, that, that governs over that specific code, their only obligation is to make sure that that petition is correctly signed and that all signatures are valid, and that is their only obligation. And the other obligation they have is to remove the commissioners. Then they're required to appoint new commissioners. Now, my hope is that we don't actually have to do that, that the amount of people who have shown up, the fact that I have a plan, and that if we need to, I am confident by the ti, by the next city, the regular next city, uh, council meeting, we could have a not signatures to remove them from at least one of the special districts because of the way they've assessed it, and that we would move even faster if they started to move against us, because they do have options and abilities to slow us down and stop us. The reason I'm here, um, is to very clearly show to them that we will remove them from our board if they don't willingly step down. Now, we don't wanna fight them, I think that it's in everybody's en, best interest that we work with them, and really, the point of this meeting is to get them to have a public meeting, to speak with us, and to have an open dialogue with the landowners they're supposed to represent. Now, the reason I've come to the city hall, and this is speaking directly to the commissioners, from our research, this city hall, I mean, the, the, sorry, uh, the Shannon Hills, it's our understanding that you are the governing entity who dictates whether to, to look over our petition to ensure that it's valid. The reason we believe that is because in our research, we've determined that in two thousand and five, the city council passed two ordinances to actually start these special districts. It's possible that it could have been the county, but in our research, we've determined that it was in fact the city council. Now, it's also our understanding that the city council had no option to stop the improvement districts from being formed. State law is written in such a way that again, the only thing that the governing body has over it is to re, review the petition and make sure that it is a legal document and that it has been correctly put together. I'm not here to blame the city, I, I know that...
It's not the city's fault.
It's not the city's fault. I'm here to...
Five of the people sitting in front of your room here in two thousand and five.
Yeah, there's no one at this table, or that table, or in this chair, who was here in two thousand and five.
Was that Lawrence?
Uh, that would have been it.
Yeah.
Yes, you're absolutely, you're absolutely right.
Were you here?
I believe I was sitting in that chair right there.
That's right.
But anyway, you wouldn't have an option.
No.
You have ugly rights, sir.
And it's my understanding too, that the commissioners have to come, they have to be landlords within the district, don't they?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll read them all.
Yeah.
I, but once you're, once you're appointed, you're appointed for life, and I don't believe that there's any obligation to remain a, a landlord. And now, again, this is my interpretation as a, as a, and I've only really read through the local municipality codes, and I don't fully understand them, so... So don't take anything I have said about obligations to be a hundred percent accurate, and I absolutely encourage the city to use their attorney to make sure anything I have said is, is correct. Now, I would ask the mayor to look over the city meeting notes that are on the website and actually look to see what happened at that meeting, because it's very clear what happened.
And which meeting was that?
It was, I've got my actual request of the city here, it's got the meeting, it's got the ordinance numbers.
Okay, what's the date of the meeting? The ordinance number, sure.
Uh, give me one second.
May nineteenth, two thousand and five.
Yes, it was May nineteenth, two thousand and five.
Okay, and your ordinance number?
The two ordinance numbers are two thousand and five oh seven and two thousand and five oh eight. I'm not sure that those are the actual ordinances, 'cause I, I thought there was another meeting that said that the, the public notices hadn't been issued correctly and that they reissued the ordinances, but when I looked for it, I couldn't find that specific meeting, so...
I can, I can check that through the records for these for you, that's no problem.
Okay, yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, what we're asking of the city council is to get the city attorney to review our findings, to ensure that you are the governing body that will review our petition. If you're not, we need to start taking action at the county level and then, and start pushing pressure for them to act quickly. I, I am legitimately concerned that if we don't move quickly and show the commissioners that we're willing to move as quickly as possible, that they could, at the very least, slow us down and possibly stop us. The legislature right now is in session, this law was not written by people who understood the law, and I, I, I don't understand the legislature, I don't, I, I think they're under a budget...
The session that they're in right now is a fiscal session, and so the only types of legislation that can be brought up right now in this session would have to relate to fiscal matters, and so there's no...
Right.
There is no chance of them going to the legislature and getting a law change to protect There is no chance of them going to the legislature and getting a law changed to protect their stance, we got time.
Right, right, well, at least on that end of things, they do have, they, they do have opportunities to review our petition. They have opportunities to, potentially if we move too slowly, reassess our taxes in the middle of our petition, which would change the requirements of the two-thirds and bring into question the legality of our petition, which potentially would require us to start a petition over. Now, I, I, I honestly, I don't think that they plan to do that, and that's.
I don't think any of those things are gonna happen.
I, I absolutely don't think they did.
I, I think, I think that, uh, there are opportunities, and I think that, if we just get together and get our plan together.
I, 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 I have a plan together, but let me finish.
Okay, well, we keep getting, chasing the rabbit trail, I don't want it.
Okay, well, this is, that's.
And, and it's gonna be more than just you involved in doing the plan, because the city is involved.
No, 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 absolutely.
Now, these, these six people here have a say.
I would disagree with that, sir. This is a local government set up for the landowners in Districts fifty-three and fifty-four.
By the state.
By the state. The landowners of fifty-three and fifty-four are the only ones that have a say in that government.
As far as what the city does, these six people up here have the final say on whatever the city does.
No, absolutely.
And that's what I'm talking about, and you're saying you've already got a plan together that you need the City Council to do.
No.
I'm saying, we need to discuss this and go over the plan and, and determine all of the aspects of it before we ask the City Council to be doing anything, our city attorney needs to review it.
What, what I'm asking the City Council to do is absolutely nothing. I don't want you to get involved, I want you to stake out of it, and the reason why is because you're the legal entity that reviews the petition. And I don't want you, your involvement in our activities in the petition to jeopardize our petition.
Okay.
So that's, that's the second thing I'm asking of the City Council, is to have the city attorney review. And, and I understand the city attorney is, his primary responsibility is to protect the city and to look out for the best interest of the city, so that, that is absolutely his priority.
And those best interests are yours as well.
Absolutely, but the city's best interest may not be the best interest of the landowners of District fifty-three and fifty-four because they're their own government, and they have separate, they potentially have separate goals. It, it's similar to, uh, the Bryant School District and the city.
You have problem in reviewing, you know, what, what you stand, okay, next point.
Okay, and the, 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 the last thing I would request is of the older men who are actually part of, who, who have a, a illegitimate say in this, in this, um, action. First, I wanna say, until you know what you can do and what you'll do to endanger our petition, I'd ask you not to do anything. Get informed, I think you're, I, I don't think anyone could argue that talking to your constituents about an issue would endanger a petition that hasn't even been started yet, but don't take any actual actions to lead any petition movements. The one thing I would ask you to do is to use your leverage within the city to petition the council member of the, our board to act in our best interest. Now, the mayor keeps mentioning things about things that are in motion, and what I would, what we actually want.
I'd say it's anything that's motion, but I, I don't have.
There, there, there's options available, what, this is what we actually want from our commissioners, and I'll, I'll step down. Um, ideally, City Council will never be involved. I think that the amount of interest in this subject, the ability for us to remove the commissioners quickly, and, and to essentially just make everything a mess is enough for the commissioners to finally open a public dialogue with the landowners. What we want from them is, now, and this is my own ideal situation, this hasn't gone through everyone here, and part of the reason why we're here today is to let the citizens of Shannon Hills know we have a solution, and to inform people who aren't very active on social media, to, to know that these actions are happening. And we're, we'll, we'll start making plans to, to inform everybody within who is impacted, every landowner. Um, but what we would love for them to do is to, as soon as possible, notify every landlord at their billing address that they plan to hold a public meeting. The intent of that public meeting is to open a public comments for interest in knowledge and information about the public districts. Now, I advise everybody, if that happens, again, be very specific in your requests and don't request every piece of information from them, because they, they have shown willingness to hire private entities at great expense.
It'd cost, it costs you when they do that.
It costs you money.
It comes out of your taxes, every time you force them to do something.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
It goes right against your tax bill, and they are quite underneath their legal rights to raise your taxes to pay for any action you cause them to make. That's why you gotta be really, really careful, it's not a simple thing, and it's not gonna be fixed next week. It's not gonna be fixed next month, but we gotta be very, very careful. And that's why I keep reiterating to you, we really need to, uh, to meet, and I wanna look at what you've got, you know, and just look for any avenues of cooperation. Because from what you've told me, you could change all those commissioners, and with things as they are, you're still not gonna have any impact on these folks' taxes, 'cause you've got bond payments that have to be made that are already committed to.
No, absolutely, but I, but at, at this point.
And so, I don't want anyone here to get any misperceptions, you know, it's very important that your expectations be appropriate. This might not necessarily mean any reduction in your taxes.
No, I, I.
This might, might end up meaning an increase in your taxes.
It's not about the taxes.
And so, we've got to be very, very careful and cautious, and not just run off, you know, half cocked and do some stuff. We gotta be careful and deliberate.
Well, I, I, very fair points, I agree with everything you said. But, it's not that, what I have found is not, not the concern with the current tax rates. For the most part, everyone who bought their houses knew what the taxes were, there was a large increase, but that's set. The concern really is, what, what keeps them from having tomorrow, and what keeps them from issuing new bonds? I don't understand the rules of the bonds, that's a completely different issue.
Can I ask you a question? Did you ever find out how they figure out what we pay?
It's, it's the assessor.
Okay, but I'm, I live across the street from this guy on the same block, I pay ninety-nine dollars a month. It's in my mortgage payment, in my, uh, my mortgage documents. What's yours? Four dollar difference.
It's, so, so you're.
It's across the street, the same house.
You're, you're in District fifty-four then?
I'm on top of Emerald Mountain.
Okay, your, your tax rates are dictated by your, the bonds that set up the improvements in your house? There were two bonds issued for fifty-four?
So, the Eastern Slope guy who's in my backyard, who pays sixty. He's in my backyard, literally, he's across the power line in my backyard.
Oh, yeah, yeah, 'cause he's in Carrington Place.
We're talking about a hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah.
These are the fights that we have been having for about three years, and it was, and the, what we get back is, you agreed to.
Yeah.
And I don't mean to, and I'm not trying to push y'all off in any way, but that's why I've got elected to this council. I'm going, where the heck is my money going, and what's it going for?
Well.
And I can't, and we can't get answers on a lot of that, and a lot of it is because the people who were appointed were appointed along with a bunch of people who are developing the land.
Well, here, let me match up, 'cause, I mean, that sounds a lot worse than what it really is on the face. Because when you set up an improvement district, the members of the, uh, board have to be landowners. Are they still landowners?
No.
That, that, they're not, that's what I'm saying, but those people were the only ones who were landowners when the improvement district was set up.
It's his developer, it's his wife, it's his son.
And so, it's, 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 it's what it actually is.
There you go, there's your turn. Right there.
It's the developer, it's his wife, it's his son.
It's Lofton, Lofton, Lofton.
Our main concern is, we have flower beds that are growing decrepit. We have, uh, lawn maintenance is supposed to be taken care of. We're all made promises about pools and this, that, and the other. And.
Now, that wasn't what I'm talking about, and we understand that how that y'all feel like you've not gotten what you were promised. But I'm just trying to make point here on that.
But the developers, I understand, the developers are bankrupt. And so, they don't live there, they've gone bankrupt, there is no transparency in the reporting. And so, we don't know what is really happening with the money, and our main concern is we'd feel more comfortable if we had three people that actually lived in that home area and had a vested interest in it looking nice. We can get these petitions signed next week, this is not a big deal. We would like confidence from you guys that we're going to get, uh, three good commissioners on there, not the developer who went bankrupt, the son, and the wife.
Thank you.
I'm gonna have to say something, but I, I did read the law.
All of these things we were just talking about addressed everything that you just said, and everything, we agree with what you just said. And we're starting to repeat each other, I don't wanna get into that.
No, I do wanna specify something here, I am an attorney, I actually gave him the law in regards to.
I, I can't hear you, Ben.
I am an attorney, I actually gave him the law in regards to, we talked about, discussed this law, and I looked over it. It's very clear, two-thirds of the land oversight the petition, we have to put a notice in the paper, and ten days later, a hearing has to be held in the governing body, which is you, and you guys overdo the hearing. Now, not just landowners are allowed to come to this meeting, creditors are allowed to come to this meeting as well. So we are going to have to, and they will get the notice, because we are required and are allowed to publish the notice. So we do need to be wary, because creditors and landowners can be named as commissioners, so I do wanna put that out there.
Well, and, 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 I, I'll, I'll try to keep this as brief as possible, there is a lot of information out there. I think everybody involved needs to get informed. If, if, to let me finish my statement, we let the City Council give it back to its actual scheduled business that actually pertains to the city. And we can, we can.
Well, wait, I'd like to say this, y'all are a part of our city, and we do care about you.
Yes, thank you very much, thank you.
No, absolutely.
And, but I want you to know that, I want you to hear it from my mouth.
I, 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 I honestly, everybody.
Yeah, 'cause we do care, and I don't want you to think that we're trying to shut you down.
No.
Because you know what, if you have any problem, you need to feel like you can come here and we're friendly to you and we wanna help.
Right, and, and.
And I think everybody feels that way.
Everybody.
Yeah.
Well.
And we wanna help.
No, absolutely.
That's right.
But we sometimes feel like there, uh, there are people out there who are trying to create an adversarial relationship for one reason or another. Maybe it's not your taxes they're most concerned about, maybe it's something else that they're interested in.
Well, whatever they're interested in, I'm interested in it too.
But, don't miss those elements, don't miss those elements.
So, whatever they're interested in, okay, so I'll just put it that way.
No, I, I think, I think the fact that, uh, in a normal city meeting, there may be one or two citi- citizens that show up. And yet, every single one of you have chosen to, to run for, get elected, and sit on this position speaks volumes to your dedication to your citizens. I don't wanna imply anything to, to the, the contrary, um, and that's not, not the intent of this. Like I said, most of my statements today are to the commissioners, I hope that they reach out to the landowners soon and that this can easily be resolved, um.
This is, are you saying, reach out, the commissioners reach out? You want the council to reach out to, to?
You want us to?
No, no, I want the.
You want us not to, you want us to say out of it?
I want you all to do nothing.
Okay, we just wanna make sure it's clear.
And I want, I want the, I, I want the commissioners of the improvement districts to reach out to landowners. And I, I think, we, we need to, to make sure that every landowner is informed, and that every landowner has a voice, and then we will probably, we, we will very soon be writing directly to the commission using free information ads or whatever ads required to get them to specifically speak to its citizens. There are, we do have rights as landowners of a municipality to get them to respond to us, and we have at least five lawyers, three law firms.
We have rights of citizens of Arkansas.
Absolutely, and, and, I, I, we have a huge amount of resources. I have people on the governor's staff who have offered to use the governor's resources to make this happen. So, things are going to move, and they're going to move very quickly, sir, they are not gonna move slow. Now, I, I would actually prefer that the commissioners stay on the commission until all these actions happen, because I believe Doug Lofton is the only person who has any real knowledge about the improvement district. And if we move quickly and remove him, then we won't know anything about our district. And I think that's one of the main concerns, is we don't, it, there is not a way to determine what even the boundaries of the district are.
Well, have you talked to Doug Lofton?
I, I have not.
Yes, what did he say, because see, hi, let me just say this, I live in South Fork, and when he helped me in South Fork, he was always real helpful, so, but I haven't talked to him in like fifteen years either, so I'm just saying, that's old information, so go ahead.
I talked to Doug about, about two years ago, and actually Doug lives about four houses down from us, and he's a real, he's a real nice guy.
He did. Uh-huh.
And I voiced my concerns like a lot of people did, I had some, uh, some issues and some, some concerns, and there's a lot of promises. You know, he said there's gonna be a walking park, there's gonna be a soccer field, playground, and the only fru-, only frustrations I have is I've been here since, uh, two thousand and eleven.
Yeah.
And, well, I used to come down to Old Shannon Hills and just shop, and it just seemed like there, there was more improvements going on down here than what there was on the hill.
Yeah.
So those are my frustrations, I don't know where the money is going, that, that's my concern, and you know, and I, I see there, there's a, you know, there's more, there, there's a bigger, uh, uh, law enforcement presence, I appreciate that, you know, but I see new cruisers and everything.
Well, I'm sure the mayor feels this way too, but we wish that he would make improvements up there too.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Let me just give you.
I don't mean to get off base, I'm just saying that, that, that.
Let me give you this example, let me give you this example, and, and folks, we didn't really need to wrap this up, 'cause Walt was gonna be twenty or thirty, he is now like forty-five. I, no, have gone, 'cause I, I, you hear this, up here on your vein? I want to build some tennis courts up there and do some other things, you know, I've been very successful in getting state grant money. And in doing that, I can double the money.
But.
But, they said, you know, I was told that they couldn't use any of their improvement tax money, you know, on city property, even if it was in your district up there.
That's why we like it.
And, and that's probably all truth, and these are all things we'll hash out, I'm not gonna hash it out here tonight, we're not gonna raise it out of it tonight.
No, 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 we're.
We're meeting Monday at, what time?
Sir, you're not the one I need to talk to, I need to talk to Doug Lofton.
Okay.
My, the point here was to get Doug Lofton to sit down with us.
Have you, have you ever thought about?
He does.
But, are we, are we not?
He doesn't.
Are we not meeting Monday?
We're, we're meeting.
And we're meeting at three o'clock.
I, I want the city.
And is there any benefit to them, to you, if there's not, I don't wanna waste my time in yours.
I, I want the city to be well informed and to know exactly what happened, if, if you don't want.
I want to be well informed and know exactly what happened.
I'd be happy to be.
I have some ideas of ways to where we might, could have an impact on your tax bill. I do have some thoughts, I have some ideas, but we need to sit down and work these out. I mean, you had, and have a coher- cohesive strategy that involves not just y'all working alone, but maybe us too, where we're involved, because we are all part of the same city. You know, we, we raise, you know, raising the water raises all boats. And I hate it whenever I hear things said that, that separates y'all from other parts of the city, y'all are Shannon Hills. You've got an Alexander address, mailing address, but that's just your mailing address.
They're Shannon.
If you'll make sure that pizza delivery guy charges your sales.
They need some improvements, and they need some, whatever we can do, we need to help them, they need two roads in and out, they need, yes. They need a lot of stuff.
And we're working on it.
I know, but I'm just saying.
And you remember passing something a couple months ago, weren't you?
I do remember, but I think that they, I think that.
And so, it's all being addressed, but you don't even know about any of that, we haven't sat down and talked. I think I may be of more value to you than what you want to realize.
These were, you know, they've been helping me fight this fight for four years, I mean, four years of the same.
I don't think anybody's saying you're hot, I don't think anybody's saying you're hot.
This gentleman has been very politely waiting to raise his hand, yes, please stand up for everybody here.
I've been in this research for several years myself, the mayor and I have actually sat down and had lunch, and so, even though he and I've had our differences too, I wanted to, to vouch for him, in that I feel like he has, and, and the City Council has our best interest in mind, and so if there's something they can do, I, I want us all to work together, I think this is gonna take us.
It's, it's a, I'll be first of it, it's a tough nut to crack, you know, this is one of, this is one of the toughest nuts that I, I've come up against.
The other thing I wanna say is to my, my fellow residents, in that I don't want you to leave here afraid that your taxes are gonna go up. Because as we look at this, if we take this kind of action to remove the commissioners off of District fifty-three and fifty-four, return that to the landowners, we have the. return that to the landowners, we have the ability with the revenue that's already being generated, if we spend that wisely, to, to cushion for that, uh, tax increase for the bond or for the bond increase without having to increase taxes. I don't want you to leave here afraid of that. I think there's a, a plenty of ways that we can do that. And also I have some ideas on being in Carrick's in place. A lot of people don't understand how our contract is connected to fifty-three and fifty-four. But we're all in the same, we're all in the same battle. And so even by not having a bond, we have the ability to do some things, if we can do this, that can free up some money to be able to build some improvements and that sort of thing.
We can accomplish much more working together.
I've been waiting for this to show up in a council meeting to help fight this fight because really all these voices need to be heard by the powers that be. I just wish it wasn't a state statute. I wish it was something at our level that we could actually finish tonight.
Well.
It's just not.
All right, and, and so next.
Okay.
Can I just say one thing? I'm sorry. The, the only thing we need right now, the very first thing, is we have to figure out how to get the commissioners out because we want say of where our money goes. So then we don't have this problem of, well, we don't know how to do this, we don't have, cause we are gonna do it. So all we need is the petition together, then we need you guys to vote on it to get the commissioners out and appoint the new commissioners.
I, I think we could be even simpler than that. That's why I want to meet with you Monday at three and we've got it scheduled to do.
If you'll let me finish, I got, I got less than twenty minutes to talk.
Okay.
And then, and then we can reach on Monday at three.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I'm gonna stop you.
I agree. I think there is a much simpler process. I don't think Doug Lofton wants to be the commissioner.
I don't think he does either.
I absolutely don't think he wants to. He actively worked to get homeowners association.
Can I ask a question? I have a question. Have you already discussed with Doug Lofton if he will be, he will remove himself with the commission?
I have not asked him. No, I have not. But I don't want, I don't want, I want to work with y'all. I don't want to be going off on my own. I want to be working with y'all as a group and us be unified.
I know, but I'm just asking if maybe if you have a relationship with him, if you have discussed this with him or not.
It's possible. It's possible if I, if I talk to him, he may just step down.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering.
But I wanna meet.
She wants to know if you have done that.
With him on, on Monday.
You want, what was your question?
And we're gonna talk about.
They want to know if you have discussed it with Doug at all. Have you discussed it with him?
Have I discussed what? Him stepping down? I have not discussed with him, him stepping down. But I know that since he has declared bankruptcy, there's going to be an opportunity there.
Do you have that kind of relationship with him where it might be a possibility to talk to him? Cause I mean, as far as, you know, you being a leader.
I've called him in the past and he's answered the phone. I haven't called him within the last two weeks. But I.
I understand.
I'm saying, I feel like that.
I'm, I'm wondering if you're willing to help us in that situation. Would you be willing to contact Doug and ask him to remove himself, his wife and his son?
I don't have a problem with that. And that's why I'm saying, we're meeting Monday at three o'clock, right?
She, you said they'll meet on Monday, they'll meet on Monday, discuss stuff with each other.
If, if that's what we would like, we would like you to meet with him Monday at three o'clock, please.
Yeah, meet and talk with stuff and get a talk and see what's going on. Just gotta assume that something's gonna happen. Y'all can talk about it. You can, you can win some agreements. That's when it happens. That's when it happens.
This is the worst way to try to do something. Going in here with a bunch of people and spending fifty-five minutes, you know, all these folks' time. It's much better if we formulate a plan and bring it in here and say, city council, we need you to do X, Y, and Z. Yes, all of them.
None, none of this stuff ever gets approached or done if y'all don't come, okay?
That's right.
So don't take it derogatory, what's going on here. The frustration comes from, cause we have other things we have to discuss and we got other things going and we can't, I hate to say it, we can't help.
Honestly, you're more important than anything we have to discuss.
But without you showing up tonight, we don't move forward.
And then we have.
We have one voice.
We know that, we know that y'all are behind this. We know that you're important. If he is basically your spokesman, the person you want as your point person, I have no problem working with him and we'll, you know, work things out. He can help with the communication, letting folks know what's going on and, and that sort of thing. You know, it, it, I think that we really need somebody in the, uh.
And I was told we have a light meeting tonight anyway, so you didn't start much business going on.
Okay, how much, how many more minutes you gonna need now?
I just wanna make, appreciate what I think, what we would like is the commissioners of the improvement districts.
The Loftons.
The Loftons. I'll, I'll, I'll use their name.
Yes, yes, thank you.
I, I, I try to be.
Believe me, we don't do that.
Yeah, yeah. This is what I want the Loftons to do and I think would be everybody's best interest. I want them to send a letter to every property owner that includes any banks or other legal entities that own property in the area, letting them know that they're going to open a public meeting where they will attend and listen to the landowners of their districts.
I think you're more likely gonna be able to get them to step down than probably. Because they know, they know if they go in front of them, that they're gonna get beat up by a bunch of folks. I say, I think we probably can get, I think we probably can get them to resign, which is the thing that we really ultimately want, isn't it? We don't want them to stay.
No, we, we want answers too. We wanna know where our money was spent on. If, if, if it really did cost an extra six hundred dollars in improvements to put a year, to put, uh, improvements on your land, you should pay for it. But we don't know that that happened and we have no way of knowing how that happened unless the Loftons show us that that's.
You want disclosure.
Yeah, we need disclosure. We need transparency in our, in our government.
But the council cannot force the Loftons to show us.
No, I'm asking, this is, I'm, I'm just saying, like I said, like I said at the beginning, this is the only way that we can talk.
Just a very, very finished, please.
This, this is the only way we can.
Hey, I'd like to let him wrap up and be finished and then we'll come to you, okay?
All right. So after that public meeting is held, I would, I would request that they respond to all public comments and provide all documentation requested of them. And to indicate that there is substantial cost in paying that documentation before they incur that cost. And then I would request that they send a similar notice, opening up elections, free and open elections for every landowner in the district. And again, this would include any of the property owners, including any banks. Because they're the ones who are equally sharing in your tax load.
I thought that the state tax code is written as an appointed process, not an election process.
It, it is, it's completely appointed. I'm asking them to do this.
Okay, to do that, we gotta change state law.
No, no, they could, they, they could say, we're having a meeting and we're gonna have elections and they could respect the results of those elections. They would still have to use the state statute and step down.
But if it goes against the state code or state law, you could be subject to a lawsuit because of an improper process.
Yep. These wrong things that will, they're gonna.
No, I, I appreciate your, your insight, but I don't have a.
Can you be, can you be in the body of three?
Absolutely. I have no problem.
Great.
And then, and then the, the last thing I would ask is that if the city council is the one to appoint the new commissioners, that they listen to the landowners in that appointment and that they do not make that appointment without input and whatever they're legally allowed to do, a- a- apparently they're not allowed to, to allow actual elections, but for the commission to listen to the landowners, the ones paying the tax, the ones that would actually have a stake in their local government, I want them to have the say.
I don't, I don't think that you'll have any problem with that with city council on that.
I, I don't think so either.
With two people up here that's a part of that district, that's been working on this crap forever, I guarantee you that the people will get that vote.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the best way to have your new commission be to have you guys decide and present it to, to the council?
That's exactly what I want.
Well, that's the proper way to do it.
That's, and, and, and I, I've thought about every single contingency.
Thirty seconds. I'll wrap it up. Thirty seconds.
I just wanna say, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you taking the time to, to address it and to listen to us. And I, I apologize for including you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your, appreciate your time. And we really do appreciate all of you being here. You had a comment, ma'am?
Uh, I can email here.
Ma'am?
I'll just email here.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else with some tax district issue? I wanna make sure everybody who had, wanted to talk has a chance to talk. Appreciate you, ladies.